True, yes. The executive director.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Time six oh two, okay. Good evening, welcome to the committee, the City Ground Committee of the Hall for Monday, March eleventh, 2024. Clerk McKur, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Artalee, Counselor Sheffield, and Finance Director Yu Ha are present.
Okay. New business, Groton Utilities Electric Rate Ordinances? Do we have a... Microphone.
At the last committee of the hall, we discussed the utility rate increases, and then subsequently, we passed out the ordinance change. And on the ordinance change, the dates for the three-year rate increase was May first, April first, April first of the three years. And the reason that that was, was we've been doing rate increases on April first for a reason that finance has. And then this year, we decided to start the rate case presentation to everybody after the holidays. Because normally, we have to present it before Thanksgiving and get everything done. And normally, we have a special meeting, and it goes through the presentation in December or in November. And then for... Do you want to explain why April first is the date that we normally do it?
The main reason for doing it on a, on the start of a quarter is we have to file a gross earnings tax, which is due quarterly. And it's, the way that that gets calculated, it actually has to break the rate down into different pieces, which is a portion that gets taxed. So what will happen is if it, like for this year with it going on May first, that calculation is going to be different for the month of April than it's going to be for May and June. So it just keeps consistency with that calc. And then we do get audited on the gross earnings tax. So it just keeps it clean for when the auditor comes out as well. So that, that's why, from the accounting side, we like the April first or the quarterly, to keep the quarterly piece the same.
Any questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, thank you for bringing that explanation. I, because I was like, this is kind of odd that we're doing two different dates. And also, like, for me, that falls under something that someone might ask me, and I would like to have the answer to. So I appreciate you bringing that information.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move the, where are we? The Groton Utilities Electric Rate Schedule to the Mayor and Council Meeting of three eighteen, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And I'll take a motion to move the Bosser Utilities Electric Rate Schedule to, ordinance rather, to the Mayor and Council Meeting of three eighteen, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is COLA retirees pension recommendation. Ron, you want to take the lead on this?
Sure. This is something that comes to the board historically annually as long as there was an increase in the annual CPI for, for the year, on annualized basis. So there was some discussion that started around the last COLA increase within the retirement board of potentially looking at how the formula itself and how it's calculated. Because this has been the same formula, I believe it was since 2020, the ordinance. That may not have grabbed it. Yeah, so it was, it was around 2020 when they first did the first COLA increase. And what that formula was, is 25% of the annualized CPI not to exceed a 1.5% increase. And then if the CPI decreased, then there would be no COLA for that year. So like I said, there was some talk within the retirement board of revisiting this because it had been a significant time since it was looked at. So the retirement board did put a committee together to review different options. And they came up with six different options. We priced them out through the actuary. And they, what they decided on in the November meeting was to change the formula from that 25% of the CPI not to exceed 1.5 to 33% of the annual CPI not to exceed 2.25. So a minor change. And then the other piece of it that changed was to have a minimum of a 0.5% COLA increase, no matter what. So even if the CPI decreased, there would still be a very small COLA increase for retirees. So as part of the packet, one of the things that we, we do every year is cost out what that COLA would be to the plan and the actuary determined contribution, contribution that the city would have to make for the year of the increase, which part of that is already built into the actuarially determined contribution. So with the new calculation this year, the increase, the proposed increase and recommended by the board is a 1.27% COLA increase for retirees pre-2021, which is kind of the same format. So it doesn't apply to somebody who retired last year. It's like a three-year lag period before that COLA comes into place. So just to put that in context, where that kind of looks over the past few years. So like I said, this year, it's a 1.27%. And that calculation, again, it was a 3.82% change in the CPI. So 33% of that is the 1.27. So it's just how that calculation worked, to just kind of walk through it. The COLA for last year was 2.12%. The year before that was 1.31%. And the year before that was 0.3%. So even though there was a change in that methodology in the calculation, it still is relatively right in line with where it's been over the past few years. So it's not, it hasn't been a huge change because that committee knew, looking at the numbers, that we, they couldn't do a drastic change based on the cost analysis of it. So that's why they came up with that.
Any questions or comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Is there, like, a standard formula that most people use? Or is it just all over the place? Or like, how does that decision usually get made?
I would say by each board in itself. I'd imagine some could follow Social Security, some could follow other formats, some could have another formula. This was a formula that was started in around 2000. And it's just been kind of carried forward until this year. I think it was looked at one other time in between there, but there was no change. It was recommended at that time. I, so I don't know how others do it. I can reach out to the actuaries to find out. There are some that don't do it. There are some that have, have larger ones. But I can reach out if you want to see if there's more of a standard. But I think it's, every plan kind of does. There.
Right depends a lot on the number of people you have.
There, there's a lot of things that go into it. The number of people that are in it, how well your plan's funded, how, you know, with the, with this, the governing agency's willing to fund into it. So I think there's a lot that go into that decision for each of the different plans.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of three eighteen, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Ron, could you let Sierra know? Thanks, Ron. Thanks, Jay.
Hi. Good, how's everybody?
Okay, we'll start with the eight twenty-four for green infrastructure and rain gardens.
So as you have heard over, some of you more recently, but several of you over the last few years, we are looking to, as part of our resiliency program, we are looking to decrease the amount of water that ends up in our stormwater runoff. And one of the ways to do that is to build out rain gardens. And so there's a, an eight twenty-four, which, for those of you who may not know, an eight twenty-four is based on the state statute eight dash twenty-four that requires the Planning and Zoning Commission to issue a referral, either positive or negative, to the council based upon whether something that is, has to do with the, um, our purchasing property, our giving property away, our making, our making any major improvements, demolition of property, things like that. It's, it's to make sure that it's consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. So the Plan of Conservation and Development is definitely met by this project. It is, you know, we're doing something to improve the city, but also, it is consistent with the language that's in the P O C D that specifically talks about addressing the issue of rainwater. And you have that letter of referral, I believe, in your packet. The other thing that we have is our project overview, which is the way that, in our department, we keep track of projects. And so we're happy to give that to you. Thanks. Happy to answer any questions, but there was a positive unanimous referral from P and Z to the council noting the positions that are consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. And I probably should have asked if everybody knows what a rain garden is. That was, sorry, but...
Counselor Sheffield?
How much would a rain garden cost for the city? What would be something, have you assessed the...
It depends upon the size, but it...
What size would you be looking to develop?
So this is a, an overall eight twenty-four for any public, any city property. We have some in mind, but it is basically at saying that if we were to put, if we were to put rain gardens on city property where we deem that it makes sense and would be beneficial that, so we don't have to keep coming back to you each time. We can, if you like, but it, it's, they can be relatively small and not terribly expensive projects. So Sierra, do you want to address the finances of it?
And I can also share with you some of the examples that are within the plan. I will say, it is dependent on, the pricing of everything is dependent on location, size, the type of plants, the soil, anything that is kind of needed for that specific site. So we have, right now, three sites in consideration. One is the municipal building, the grassy area right out front here, the parking lot. We're looking to do roughly about 2,000 square feet of rain gardens. It will be three or four separate rain gardens, both on the, you know, the parking lot, as soon as you pull up and you can face the building. And there is grassy areas on the end, so those two ends. And then the, where all the cherry blossoms are, there will be potentially two gardens within that area to kind of help capture stormwater runoff. We are also looking at the Benham Road Firehouse to do a rain garden of roughly about 140 square feet there. And then looking at Birch Plain Creek, potentially doing a 725-square-foot rain garden that will be right at the entrance of Birch Plain Creek. You will notice that it abuts a commercial, a residential property right to the back of it. So this will kind of help. There's like residential, I think there's like a tennis court, and then there's Birch Plain Creek. So this will kind of help with that stormwater runoff that is going, capturing from over there. And then we also have on here, Washington Park. So there is a sidewalk that leads to the tennis courts. We are going to work with Parks and Rec to kind of figure out ways to install rain gardens that actually captures the rainwater before it gets to the sidewalk, or maybe shortly thereafter. For Washington Park, we do not know what the size of it would be. We're currently working with 140, but knowing that we may have to do something a little bit bigger to cap, capture everything that is there. The other location that is not on here that we talked about as far as the image is Bridge Street Gateway. So the intersection collects a lot of water, so maybe looking at potential solutions there as well on, sorry, going back to Thomas Road. The rain garden we're proposing is actually within Birch Plain Creek, but we do think that there needs to be further assessment right at the entrance, where the road is, to see if there needs to be other interventions to kind of help that catch basin that's in the road and, and keep water off the road there. Does that answer your question?
Counselor Sheffield?
I guess the next thing, have you submitted any proposals as far as studies and so forth to assess again the value of how much these projects would cost?
So our community resiliency plan, I think, captures the value of why the city of Groton should pursue looking at this type of green infrastructure moving forward. And then as far as, I think, like a financial value, we, currently, the proposed projects are either being funded through a grant program with the Baker Cove Watershed or through an award that we got through the Connecticut Deeps Urban, Urban Garden, Urban Green Community Gardens Initiative, if I'm saying that rightly.
So that would be something you would have, you know, some grants involved to finance, you know, these projects?
Absolutely. Right now, there's a historic amount of money that's being made available for resilience projects. We are trying to utilize, maximize our utilization of those programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. Could you explain on your sheet that you gave, or the front we have, it says down one through six, what does it, what would it mean, encourage reduction of stormwater runoff from private property?
I'm sorry. You said number six?
Number two.
So rain gardens capture water and, my apologies, but to state the obvious, water runs downhill. So if there's a private property on the upper portion of a hill, and it runs, their water runs into public property that is outfitted with a rain garden, that water would then get captured by the rain garden and wouldn't end up in the street and through the catch basin. So it's a, it's, it's one of many mechanisms for capturing that water that is traveling from where, Five Corners is a good example. It's a high point, and we have a lot of sheet flow that comes from there. If the, if that water, instead of running through the streets, which it just, you know, it go, it works to find the nearest catch basin. If we can start looking at ways to make that area have more pervious surfaces so that there are places to have depressions and biofiltration by the, with the plants and rocks to decrease the runoff velocity, that will keep water from going from the higher land into, ultimately into the storm drains. It ends up recharging the below-ground aquifers.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Any hearing none, I'll take a motion to move these eight twenty fours to the Mayor and Council Meeting of three eighteen, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, the minor facade improvement applications.
So, the shot may pop on Zoom at some point in time, but the E D C wanted to officially present to you guys two more minor facade improvement applications. One is for Barkin Pumpkins LLC. This is technically a law office that is at the same address. The house, the property is just housed under this name. Oh, sorry. So Barkin Pumpkins redid the siding of their entire building, all four sides. They spent roughly 26, over $26,000 on the project. They are looking for a reimbursement of, of 2,500 for the facade portion of it. You will notice that, I believe I gave you guys both breakdowns of the full project, but then also what the facade grant caught, portion of it cost them, which was about 3,000, I'm sorry. It was like 3,880 dollars just for the facade. So we will be reimbursing them 25 towards that. The project is complete. They received their certificate of approval. They've checked everything off of our requirement list. And the E D C has agreed that this application is eligible under the program, meets all of our guidelines, and is recommending the full 2,500 reimbursement for this business.
Any questions or comments on the Barkin Pumpkins minor facade improvement? Okay, yeah. Counselor Sheffield?
So the proposal total was 3,880, so they, you're coming up with 2,500 of that, 3,880? Is that what...
So technically, the proposal total for the entire project was 26,200. But when they were to section out just the facade, since what is included in this grant, that is the 3,880. And then they'll request them to be reimbursed to 2,500.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of three eighteen, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Twisted Misty?
I just also noticed, I did not have the E D C's minutes included within your packets for tonight, but I have them here if you want to see how those votes of decisions went. In regards to Twisted Misty, Twisted Misty replaced the business sign on their building, and they are requesting a reimbursement of up to, of 877 dollars and 39 cents. You will notice, this is a new business. We did just recently do a ribbon cutting celebration, and they were one of the businesses that were involved. They are looking to submit in phases, so this 880 is part one. They know that they can apply to up to the 25. They also have a door improvement that they're looking to do, but this was just one project that was already complete that they wanted to get before this council, before the E D C and this council to at least get the ball rolling. I'm going to say, all the, the content information, I think, is provided within your packets. There's some really good before and after pictures of what they have done. And the E D C unanimously agrees that this project is in line with all of our policies and procedures and requirements, and is requesting that we do the 877 dollars and 39 cents reimbursement to Twisted Misty.
Okay, questions or comments on the Twisted Misty? Minor facade improvement? Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council, three eighteen, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Phyllis, if you want to come up. So we have some board member applications. We've recently had some, had a resignation from the Board of Ethics, and we've reached out to some folks. And Phyllis is one who would like to be on the Board of Ethics. And you have her resume in front of you. You also, she is here. The others couldn't make it tonight, she could make it. So if you have any questions for her, and...
If she would like to introduce herself, I guess, as far as, you know...
Phyllis, would you mind introducing yourself and giving a little bit of history on why you're interested in this position?
Okay, Phyllis Meyer, I was raised in Groton. I lived here until I was age 22. I married, went to Colorado for a couple of years, lived 36 years in California, and two years in France. And then one day, I decided, wanted to come back because my daughter had children in New York. And so I said to my husband, I'm, I'm moving to Connecticut. And he said, I guess I am too. And we, we were here. I lost him five years ago. And Jimmy Streeter is the one that asked me about doing this.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to say thank you for offering to serve on this committee. It's one that I don't think meets super often, but when they do meet, the meetings they have are very important. So it can be tough to get members for these types of committees that are kind of intermittent. And, you know, I think as kind of the behind-the-scenes checks and balances, you know, we need good residents to help us to make good decisions. So I appreciate it.
I've always been philanthropic, but I've never been on a council like this before. And, and not that I'm on the council, I'm on a committee, but I thought, well, my civic duty, maybe.
So thank you.
Counsel could be next, you never know.
What?
I said counsel could be next, you never know. I'm sorry, please.
I'm sorry, I have a question for you. I did not take the time to look at the balance on the committee. What does this do to our...
You have it?
With Ms. Meyer, we would have one more vacancy, but there is another application for tonight.
What about Ballast, Swing, Republican, and Democrat? That's what you're getting at.
That's what I'm asking about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, I didn't finish the question, so...
Do you have that in front of you?
I have it at my desk. I want to say it's three and two, but I can go run and get it.
No, that's fine, three and two is fine.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council, three eighteen, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Will I get some kind of notice?
You will, you'll get a letter from me.
Okay, thank you.
You'll get, actually, we'll probably call you first. Did we not vote?
Well, we moved it to the next meeting.
Oh, I thought we said all in favor say aye.
To move it to the next meeting.
Right, don't we move it and then vote?
It's moved to the next meeting.
To the Mayor and Council.
So I guess I don't understand your...
Right, the vote could always change, right?
I'm not saying that.
Well, I won't, I'm not saying that either.
So just to move it.
Yeah, right, right.
So this is being moved to the Mayor and Council Meeting. They will then vote on the Mayor and Council Meeting. And they'll either accept it or they won't. But they probably will.
Then, yeah.
And, and then it'll be official, but you will get a phone call, and you'll get a letter from me stating that you're appointed.
Okay, somebody tried to call me, I guess, and I don't know what happened, but they never reached me. So is somebody want to take my telephone number now?
Yeah, Danny, could you get that?
Eight six zero, four four five, seven six nine four. And that's the landline. You can leave a message.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you for coming out.
All right, next up is Harbor Management Commission Application, Terry Sang. We have an opening on the Harbor Management. He would be an alternate member. And he has been involved, he's in Jupiter Point. He's been involved with getting people organized to talk about the speeds that have been in the, in the Baker Cove and, and some violations. And as a result, we're, we're going to, it's not just a result of that, but we're going to be increasing, the, the chief has the Harbor Patrol that we're going to be using from Kenneth Streeter Pier all the way up to and including Baker Cove. So he could make it tonight, but he is interested in being on Harbor Management. it tonight, but he is interested in being on Harbor Management. Any questions or comments on his application?
If I may. He did reach out to me and let me know that if the council had any questions for him, that he's happy to, if I let him know what they were, he's happy to respond via email to any of the councilors' questions.
Okay. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I mean, his answers and his background is pretty impressive, and I think lends itself to being on this commission, especially where he lives, is, makes a lot of sense. So I think he'd be a good, and I believe I met him at a meeting.
You did.
And he-
I think he's been here at a meeting.
So I think it's really good to get more people who are physically in that area that, of concern. I think it'll be helpful to have them on the committee, so I think it's a good, good move.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting at 3:18, 24.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And lastly, we have another opening on the Board of Ethics. This will fill up the Board of Ethics, and Mike Bakura has sent in an application for Board of Ethics. And you have his packet in front of you. Comments? Deputy Mayor, we'll go Deputy Mayor Depot, I'll start first.
My only question is, is he aware that if something were to come up concerning the clerk, he would have to recuse himself?
Yes.
Very aware.
Okay. I do, I do think, you know, he does have also a good resume. He works for Electric Boat, and he's in the Air Force National Guard. I think those kinds of things do lend themselves to someone who can tell the difference between right and wrong, which is what we need that committee for. And it's nice we're dragging our spouses into volunteering, too. I'm just kidding. But we gotta, gotta get the volunteers when we can find them.
So as far as volunteers go, we send out, we're, I think we're almost to the point where monthly, we're sending out openings to the chairs of the Republican, the Democratic Party. And we try, one of the things I try to do is to try to maintain a balance between Republican, Democrat, non-affiliateds, but in the end, it's more important to me that I'm able to have a quorum, to have a meeting than it is to have everybody equally balanced. But if you know people that want to be on any of the boards and commissions, please have them contact the mayor's office at 860-446-4103, and we'll do that. Or you can contact the clerk, 860-446-4102, and get an application, then apply. Counselor Sheffield, you had a comment?
Yeah, yeah. Danny, your husband has impeccable credentials, and, yeah, I, I'm with Deputy Mayor Depot as far as, you know, I mean, I have reservations as far as, you know, potential conflict, and it'd be heartbreaking, you know, God forbid, if something, you know, goes wrong within, you know, the city and to where there's an investigation and stuff like that, and, yeah, he would have to recuse himself. But when, with that recusal, it leaves four members to where if there's a two-two split, then things may not get resolved out of that. And that's my primary concern. If he had to recuse himself, we have to make sure that we have three-one, I guess, one way or the other. So that would be my only concern as far as, I mean, I'm sure he would recuse himself, but then that leaves the possibility that you don't get a majority of a, of a potential investigative ruling. So that's my thoughts.
So far, in the rulings that the Ethics Committee has produced, they have, they've never had a problem with a split. It's always been unanimous. Understand, well, understand that the past performance is not a predictor of future performance, however, comma, there's also an assumption that Clerk Bakura is going to do something to land herself in front of the Board of Ethics. So I think, you know, that'd be just the same, says the same as any of the mayor or council landing themselves in front of Board of Ethics. So I don't see that as happening. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this appointment to the mayor and council meeting at 3:18, 2024.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel, for coming out.
What's that? Yeah, I was hoping it was going to be quick, so you're so exhausted. Well, I'm just always, I'm running from like, you know, 5 o'clock in the morning, and I got to pick up my daughter at 5 o'clock, and I'm always like-